...for West Police Committee, the whole meeting is ordered. We'll be discussing municipal vehicle registration fee, public informational meetings.
All right.
And you've got a slide?
Yep. Well, we've talked about this some to a small degree and I think it's been four meetings in the past, you know, this past year. So what those meetings were discussing is really about what it is. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to really talk about why we're even looking at it because, you know, we've talked about just shortfalls in budget and so forth, but to really get into the nuts and bolts of it, why it is needed or something is needed. And, you know, so just some of the background on it. So I'll just start with that. Let's see, it's pretty small. So just to give a little bit of history on the very short, you know, the municipal vehicle registration fee is that it was actually created by Wisconsin's statutes and it's been in place since 1967. It's just until 2011, only four communities in the state used it. It just wasn't used much because there wasn't really a need. The municipalities, according to the state statute, municipalities determine the amount. There is no set amount or maximum, minimum, or anything like that set by the state. It is entirely up to the municipalities. Vehicles, since both counties and municipalities, like cities, villages, and towns, since all of them can implement a municipal vehicle registration fee, then if a county implements one and a municipality or city implements one, then the vehicle is actually subject to both. So, and if a county implements a vehicle registration fee, they cannot trickle down the money to the municipalities. So they're completely independent of each other. The counties go for county roads, the cities, towns, and villages go for local roads. And the revenue from municipal vehicle registration fees can only be used for transportation uses. And that's also designated in the state statute. That's a requirement. So the next question is why now? Because as I said, this has been an option for the municipalities since 1967. Only four did up until 2011. And now as of this year, or at the end of that last year, 27 communities have, so that many adopted it, 23 communities from 2011 till now. And actually, the majority of those communities that have adopted it, it's been in the last one to two years. And the reason why there's more of this influx of them since 2011 is because in 2011 is when the state further restricted levy caps. And so what they did in 2011, we had levy caps prior to that, and a levy cap is the maximum amount that we can increase from one budget year to the next budget year. And in 2011, that levy cap was changed by the state to only, to equal the value of net new construction. What net new construction is, is just what it sounds like, is the total amount of new construction, the assessed value of new construction. So if there's like an increase in just the assessed value of existing development, that doesn't go towards our maximum levy cap. We get the taxes for it. It's just that it still keeps us, it doesn't contribute to be able to loosen our belts a little bit. So, and that new construction is also, so the new construction, new development minus any deconstruction. That's not real common, but to give you the example, it's like the home on the corner here that was actually torn down. The former Sharon Johnson property that was torn down. Sometimes that happens, so then that value is taken off of the net new construction. So what that meant for Village of Hortonville, for example, is that in 2018, our levy cap, so the total amount that our budget could increase from 2017 to 2018 was about $13,000. So when you figure a $13,000 increase over a $2.2 million budget, it's not a lot. And just to give you some idea of where that, you know, that gets consumed immediately is there's a fee called the fire protection fee that is required by the Public Service Commission. And it's basically a fee that the village pays to the utilities in order to provide fire hydrants and water. It's a state requirement and a state regulated at the value of it or the cost of it. The PSC increased the Village of Hortonville's fire protection fee requirement by $9,000 in 2018. Another example of an increase from 2018 that the village has no control over is 2018 elections increased the budget needed for running the elections by $12,200. So we had a maximum amount, we could increase our budget from 2017 to 2018 of $13,000. And the elections alone increased the election costs, pretty much consumed that entire budget. So everything else had to be zero. And just the cost of, you know, healthcare costs, for example, fuel costs, all of that, those increases then required that we had to cut other services elsewhere. And if you recall, in our 2018 budget, we eliminated all planning activities. We eliminated most of the reserve fund contributions, so the money that we put in annually to a reserve account, like to try to save up for a transportation project. In 2018, we had to suspend all of that just to be able to cover the mandated increases we had with the minimal levy cap increases we had. So that's the specific story to Hortonville. Just some of the other reasons too is the rising transportation costs. Oh, I thought I took this slide out. More information than you probably need, but there's kind of two areas of transportation costs. There's a lot more. I mean, you know, you could consider fuel and vehicle equipment and, you know, equipment for transportation, all of that stuff, a lot of that. I'm concentrating here on just roads because while the state allows this money to be used for anything transportation related, the proposal that the village is considering is to really keep that narrow and further restrict that funds to just going towards road reconstruction and rehabilitation. So not new road building, not buying a new snowplow, it's really about pavement. So there's the two areas, rehabilitation, which is minor, I wouldn't say minor, but it's just repairing. I would say more so, you know, tearing up the top part and pulverizing it, putting it back, you know, repaving. The lifespan on that is about 15 to 25 years. 2018, the cost of that is about $100 a foot. Then there's reconstruction. This is what we're going to be doing at Grandview Road this year or next year. That's subbase work where there's major problems with it, you know, maybe expanding, increasing the width. That's something that's needed on Grandview, it's very narrow. That has a pay, when you do the total reconstruction of it, that has a lifespan of about 30 years. And in 2018, the estimated cost of that is about $300 a foot. So if you look at that why now is our deteriorating roads. If you think of rehabilitation, I mentioned that it's 15 to 25 year lifespan. The village has about 14.7, I think it is, miles that are of road that are under the village's jurisdiction. So just to be clear, this doesn't include like Highway 15, county roads. That's their, frankly, that's their problem. These are the local roads. We have 14.7 miles. So if you figure out 14.7 divided by the average life expectancy of rehabilitation, which I put about 20, that means that we should be rehabilitating about three quarters of a mile annually. That's one twentieth of the total amount of roads that we have. The cost of that annually would be $388,000. For reconstruction, the life expectancy is 30 years. So 14.7 miles of village road divided by 30, you know, and I know this isn't, you know, really realistic, we don't do a quarter of a mile at a time, but just for, you know, purposes of keeping this going, that's, you know, the calculations, that means that we should be reconstructing about a half mile every year. And that annual cost is $792,000. So just to maintain at the appropriate level of the life expectancy of our roads, we made an annual investment of rehabilitation and reconstruction of about $1.2 million. Obviously, we don't put anywhere near that into our transportation, but that's, and that's the problem across the state, is that there's some communities that are actually tearing up pavement and reverting roads back to gravel because they can't keep up with the life expectancy and repave it within that life expectancy. And then the other issue is the declining state transportation aid. The state pays municipalities, gives us aid for transportation. The source of that aid is from fuel taxes and from vehicle registrations. So the state takes that and allocates some of it out to the municipalities. The calculation of the state aid is based on the previous three and six years of transportation costs by that municipality. So what that means is that instead of the money being based on what our needs are in the future, it's based on what our expenses were in the past. So, and then it's also got, you know, takes into account mileage of streets and the past year's aid. So this is the Village of Hortonville's state aid. The 2018 letter that we received for state aid for transportation is 13% lower than it was in 2012. But transportation costs, asphalt costs are considerably higher. And the other issue is that while the transportation aid isn't keeping up, and the reasons for that is because, one, the, you know, we all have been hearing a lot about the gas taxes that while Wisconsin's is high, it has not changed since 2006. And it's not indexed for, like the Consumer Price Index. It's been flat since 2006. While yes, you get more with increased fuel expenses, we also get less because vehicles are becoming more efficient. People are buying less gas, so they're not, they're paying less of the tax. And then the state aid formula, like I said, is based on the past projects, not future needs. So what happens is that the village gets fewer, or let's say 2018, we get less state aid in 2018 than we did in 2017. So we scale back our projects because we don't have as much state aid to do it. Well, now we scale back our projects, so then future years, we're going to have less state aid because we decreased our expenses the year before. We didn't pay as much, we didn't do as many projects. So it's this cycle that you cut your costs, well, then your state aid gets cut. So this is a diagram. The one on the left is showing our general transportation aid, what we actually got each year from 2012 to 2018. The bottom one is the transportation expenses, what we paid for transportation, what the state uses in that calculation from 2011 to 2016. There's a two-year lag there because you can see this spike when we got a little bump up in how much transportation aid we got, that was in 2016. That correlates to the 2014 bump up when we paid more for transportation. So because it's based on the past three years and the past six years, this is going to keep moving along with this. So this peak is going in, from 2014, is no longer going to be calculated into our transportation aids for the three years next year and in the six years, three years from that. So what that means is that our average of what the state bases it on is going to dramatically decline next year because that bump up there where we spent the most is not going to be factored into the averages. So since it's based on past expenses, not future needs, our state transportation aid is projected to decrease in 2019 further from what it was in 2018. It'll decrease in 2019 less than it was in 2018. I think I got my years wrong the first time. So just going over the, kind of the whole financial part of it, is the restoration, rehabilitation, and reconstruction, if we were to keep up with it based upon the life expectancy of it, would mean, we would need about $1.2 million invested annually. Our general transportation aid in 2018 was $118,287. So that leaves annual, I keep wanting to say rest and relaxation, our rehabilitation and reconstruction investment needs minus our transportation aid is about $1.1 million. So that's what we would need to just keep up with it. Our entire tax levy is 1.5 million. So that would pretty much consume our entire levy, a good chunk of it, minus $400,000. So the options that we have are postpone projects, this is what we've been doing and that's, and I'm not blaming us at all, that's what everybody's doing because we have no options, we don't have a choice. So we postpone projects, our roads, I think, we all have heard that, we get a lot of complaints that, you know, Warner Street and Grandview are the big ones I hear about the most. It's not sustainable to keep postponing projects. And the projects will, the cost will increase over time because the cost of asphalt is just, I mean, it's increasing by the day. The next option, you know, funding the, you know, funding it with levy, existing levy, and as I showed you in the previous slide, our needs would be 1.1 million, our entire levy is 1.5 million, that would be 400,000 for all other, all other village services. It wouldn't even cover what the services that are state mandated. So it's just not feasible. The other option is to fund transportation needs with new debt. This is an option, but it kicks the financial can down the road. It still ends up being paid for by levy and ultimately, we will reach our maximum debt capacity and not be allowed to take out any further debt either because the state does put a cap on maximum debt. And I think, I mean, just everybody, I think we all agree that debt is not a good alternative. Then there's alternative revenue sources. There are some grants. We tried and actually, we did receive a $174,000 grant from the state for Grandview. We don't often receive them and the reason being is because they are typically targeted towards projects that either have a CERVA or have along the area a high, low, and moderate income population or that has some kind of, provides access to a new development that would provide employment to low to moderate income people. We don't have that. You know, Hortonville has a higher than average household income, higher than the state, the county, and the nation. So we just simply don't meet those requirements. But as I said, we did get the grant for Grandview and the justification on that and why we were chosen for it is it's more regional than most of our local streets. So that gave us bonus points and it has to do with being by the school and safety issues. Then the other option is tax incremental financing, which is what we use for actually the, I see Jim's in the audience, for the Michael Ricker project. That's an option for there and actually, a part of Grandview will also be paid for by tax increment financing. However, the limitation on TIF is that it can only be used for projects that promote and will result in new development. So that's why with the Brookwood Drive, Michael Ricker area, that was allowable to be used with the TIF because we were talking about the redevelopment of that outline. In the case of Grandview, the area column that's often referred to as National's is for sale now and is looking for development. So that's how we use that to justify and, you know, expending or using this money, TIF money, to help with the Grandview project. So it's available, but only in limited source, you know, limited areas and for purpose, limited purposes. So the next option is the municipal vehicle registration fee, also known as the wheel tax. So vehicle registration fee versus tax levy versus debt. Vehicle registration fee is also more equitable and the reason being is that property tax, you know, our tax levy, if we use that, then it's just property owners that are paying for it. With debt, that also is just property owners that are, have the burden and it also increases costs because again, we're kicking it down the, you know, down the road. And the vehicle registration fee, the burden is distributed to the users based on the vehicles. So it's not just property owners that are shouldering the burden of it, it's all users, well, not all users of the road. I know people pass by all the time and it's not getting them, but that's beyond our control. But it's everybody within the village that has a vehicle. So the Hortonville proposed vehicle registration fee, the DOT says that there's 5,665 eligible vehicles. I find that very hard to believe because that's no people that live in the village. So I do think this is high and I know that, I think the reason why it's high is because when you get your registration card, there's a box on it that asks where you keep your vehicle. If you do not mark that, then it defaults to the zip code. And so I think a lot of these vehicles that DOT is showing are actually in Dale and Ellington and Hortonia. So I think this is very high. And for all of those people that, you know, if we do implement this, that's how you do it, make sure that you check that box and only, you know, so only those that actually have vehicles in the village are paying for it. Of the vehicle registration fee, the DOT retains 17 cents per registration for their administrative costs. And that's regardless of the price or the fee. So if it's $10, that vehicle registration fee is, the administrative cost is 17 cents. If it's $20, it's 17 cents. Doesn't matter. But what it relates or results in then is if the village were to implement a $20 registration fee and if there are 5,600 cars, vehicles in the village, and again, I just think this is way off, but if, that's the data I have, that would result in about $110,000. And the Village of Hortonville would retain, it calculates out to 99.85% of the fees collected. It goes straight from, you know, that's after subtracting the 17 cents. So who pays? It's the registered owners of vehicles under 8,000 pounds that are kept in the village. Again, I mentioned that little box on the registration fee because I know, Jim, you had mentioned you have vehicles that, for the business, registered under your name, but they're kept elsewhere. I know I have a vehicle registered under my name and is parked at a university in Eau Claire. For those, it doesn't, you can just check that box and specify where it's actually housed and then you don't, you don't pay it. Exempt vehicles include buses, motorcycles, mopeds, motorhomes, farm equipment, dealership vehicles, things like that. And the $20 vehicle registration fee equates to about five cents per day per vehicle. Again, it's, you know, is a more equitable distribution of the burden to users, not just property owners. And it's not going to cover all needs of the village by any names. I showed you $110,000 is the best case scenario. That doesn't put a dent in the, you know, much of the dent in the $1.1 million, you know, figure to be needed to keep up with the life expectancy. However, it could get, you know, our best case scenario, if it's $110,000, we could get two projects done per year. This is our capital improvement program. We do this annually, we update it, it's a five-year continuous plan and it includes the road improvements that are needed and the roads that are put in here are based on pavement conditions, traffic conditions, things like that. And these are the ones that are in the most, the shortest timeframe of need in our current capital improvement program. Industrial Park Road was one, that was just completed in 2017. Grandview Road is another one. As I mentioned, we've got a $175,000 grant for that and we expect to contribute from TID III to that and it will probably also have a special assessment, but it will be reduced because of these other funding sources we were able to get. Then the ones in yellow are the ones, the streets, the, you know, road projects that we currently have listed in our CIP and the estimated costs. Again, this is just estimated because these costs were, I think they were calculated a couple of years ago, so they need to be, they may not be current with the continuous rising cost of asphalt. But if we, if we did implement this wheel tax in the first year, you know, let's say it did get to $110,000, even if you cut it in half and just have, you know, $55,000, if you look at these projects, that means it could get one project done per year. That's it? Do you have any questions?
Anybody in the board have questions?
I actually saw that, I counted out households, there's approximately 1,200 households in the village. So if you were estimating two cars per household, which would be probably pretty close, would only be $48,000. Three cars would be $72,000 at the most. I don't, I think that's even high because I think this figure of like 5,665 is probably very generic.
I think it's based on zip code, I really do.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
So it's not to get, yeah. I talked to some people from the New London area and they're people in Liberty who have the New London mailing address who are paying this fee.
Yes, because they, and, yep, I got to the Minnesota area.
So even New London, I think when they passed theirs, didn't realize how many of those figures were not correct from the DOT.
Oh yeah, I think it's, like I said, I said that, I think we should cut it in half for what we expect to get for revenue with.
Like all people with Appleton addresses with living in Grand Chute, you know, they had to notify, they'd check the box and then they didn't pay that fee and it's fixed for the following year. It's fixable.
But even $48,000 is $48,000 more than what we have now and can still get towards one project done per year.
Those projects there, Dan, with that, like I remember Industrial Park, that was assessed to those businesses.
Correct. That one was 100% assessed to the businesses that had frontage on Industrial Park Road. So what I mean by 100% assessed is that the entire cost of the project, the only part that was subtracted out from it was because the village owns property, so the village was responsible. We figured out what the cost is per linear foot and each property owner had to pay the amount of, you know, the total project cost calculated out to what that cost is per linear foot. So it was 100% assessed in Industrial Park Drive.
Okay. And then like the Pine Street, Cedar, and Warner, is that assessable?
Yes, all of them.
So it's not such a hit to, because I remember with Parker Heights, that was a big deal, that $3,000 was such a personal hit on each one of those homeowners and that's what spurred all this.
Well, those are not 100% assessable because our, and that was another discussion with Parker Heights, is that once this, this project we've been talking about is done, then they would revert to the village ordinance on special assessment and the village ordinance identifies a portion that would be village and a portion that would be assessable. And, you know, I don't, I wouldn't go so far to say that this would be 100% go towards the, to reduce the assessments, I think it should be, this is just my personal opinion, I think it should be both because, you know, both reduce the village's portion of it and the special assessment because the village can't do projects because of not having funds. So I think, I think it should go towards both, reducing the village portion of it and especially the assessment portion, but.
And who will decide on that?
How we're going to divide it.
Each time we do an assessment.
So basically, you're still not getting away from assessments?
No, I don't think we'll ever get away from, entirely away from assessments, it's trying to reduce it. Because right now, it's just not sustainable and like I said, we're getting, you know, what we're doing is just not doing projects. I mean, how long has Warner Street, I don't know how long it's been on our capital improvement plan and Grandview. Those are just the ones that stand out in my mind because they've, every capital improvement plan I've seen, they just, they linger there and not getting done.
And it would be nice, like when they redid Lakeview and Lakeshore, I mean, I got hit for $2,500, it'd be nice if that would have been cut down, maybe in half.
$2,500 is nothing. When I lived on Mill Street, I paid about $5,000 for each home I owned.
Well, that, you know.
And we made, they're talking $40,000. And the one thing I want to specify though too is these project costs also include some sewer and water. This cannot be used for sewer and water. So it would be split out to determine how much of this project is for the actual street and it could go towards that. So I want to make sure that it's very clear and transparent that this cannot be, go towards utility infrastructure, only street, curb, gutter. So if a water main is replaced, it cannot, cannot be used to defray the cost of that needed to the village or to the property owners. This is strictly for streets. And again, I'm just proposing, I'm suggesting that if the board does do this, that we, that the board further limits the, restricts the use of the transportation, you know, the revenues generated by this to go just towards street projects, not, you know, few, not few. not, not just operating budgets of fuel and, you know, the vehicle replacement. I just, I personally think it is better used to go towards this. Some communities are actually using it to pay the, their debt, existing debt for transportation. They're using the revenue from the wheel tax to, to cover those annual debt payments instead of letting going towards it. Different communities are doing different things because the state just says transportation is very broad.
Any questions from, yes?
What's in that new construction for Hortonville's here?
We don't know it until, we usually get that in about, I want to say, July, August. We expect that it's going to be, in, in 2019, we think it's going to, we're going to have a better budget year and even better in 2020 because the net new construction is actually like a year late. So in twenty, our 2018 budget was based on 2016 construction. We didn't have much in 2016. Some of the stuff that was going on here, you know, started in 2017, the bulk of it, I don't, I gotta get my dates right, yes, 2017, although a lot of it was in 2018, so I think it's going to be kind of split between nineteen and twenty. So I don't have those numbers yet, but I do think we are going to have some relief in twenty, nineteen and 2020. And in my, well, what we had talked about at the board level, when we did the 2018 budget was the hope that we could bring back some of those projects that we, and not projects so much, but programs that we had to cut. Like I said, we had, we had to cut all planning activities, economic development, our marketing, that kind of stuff.
Village voice?
Yes, the newsletter.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of things, reserve funds.
I guess my thought is that if you've put a wheel tax on, you're never going to take it off. And in just my square mile, in my subdivision, there's a million dollars in homes that went up in the last three months.
It, it doesn't have to be in perpetuity. It doesn't have to be.
It's going to be. You don't, politicians don't take money and then.
No, actually, I mean, that, that is, that is an option, that the board could put a sunset on it and write it right into the ordinance because the way this is passed is by ordinance. At the bottom of the ordinance is an effective date. And if they have an effective date starting, you know, three months from now when it would start, then it could go, then it would go until they take action to undo it, which some communities have.
How many?
That, that, excuse me?
How many have taken action to take it off?
Well, there were some that had, I, I don't know the, the actual number because there were some.
Very few.
Yeah, I, I do think it was very few. I do agree.
Very, very few. And many of them have also encountered the fact that if the county comes along and does it, you're going to double bump us. And in the larger communities, the assessment goes away. You're not taking your assessment away here. In other words, my street, which you repaired, Al knows this, not too far, long ago, we got hit for sewer, or curb and gutter and, and that type of stuff. The problem was is your workers damaged the curb and gutter that I got charged to repay for, okay? It's, it's already damaged again because your loader in the winter keeps running it into the curb and dropping it on private property, the snow. And you can, you can walk around over there and see it. Brand-new curb and gutter within the first year was ripped off from my driveway. Those assessments won't go away along with your wheel tax, which you can increase, but you're not talking about that. You're just talking about projective cost that I would agree with you that there's only probably twenty-something hundred cars, you know, tops in the village. So the only way it goes away is if the board stays intact to be able to say in two, three years, when we matter projects, we'll take that wheel tax away. The problem is the board doesn't stay intact and everybody has a different opinion for why they come onto a board.
Well, and that's what I had mentioned is that actually the board can set a sunset on it.
That doesn't mean that that board isn't sitting at the time that they won't reinstate it.
Oh, no, no, I can't guarantee that somebody doesn't reinstate it.
That's right. To his point, it may never go away.
That is true, yes.
Yeah.
And it, and if it doesn't happen this year, it could happen at any time.
What is the largest cost for the village? What is the largest annual cost for the village?
See, I would have to say debt is one of, is one of the largest ones and, because we, yeah, debt and public safety are the two largest chunks of.
What's rolling under the public safety?
Police, fire, that fire protection charge that I had mentioned earlier, I'd have to look at our actual budget to get some of the other things, but it's police and fire primarily.
What is the annual increases of those departments every year?
Fire has always been, just since I've been here, two percent. The police actually this past year decreased. I, I don't know the percentage. I don't, I don't know it offhand.
Actually, most departments came in like a zero.
No, actually, most departments in 2018 were decreased because of the, you know, what I had mentioned about the budget issues is that actually in, in the, the fire districts came in at zero and all our departments decreased because of the budget shortfall with the net new construction. I'm trying to think of, yeah, because actually the only, the thirteen thousand that increased that we were allowing over the previous budget all went to those items that I identified of elections, actually pretty much took all of it. Then we had the nine thousand public service, public protection fee, fire protection that the state, W, Public Service Commission increased that on us. So then that meant that everything else had to be cut. So that's what I was mentioning that.
What is the guarantee that the actual dollars collected will go for roads?
They, they have to by statewide.
You just told me that there's other alternatives that boards can use it for under the transportation.
Oh, yes, well, that's, that's something that.
So how much can we guarantee that the money being collected will go roads? Because, because quite honestly, what we've done here and what we've got here is neglect to the roads in Hortonville for many, many, many years. The money hasn't gone to the roads.
Well, I would say the money wasn't there, but to answer your.
Listen, I've been here for thirty-some years. The money's been there, but it's all been under special assessment. The money's been there. You just got done telling me you rolled it, many, many, many communities right now, it's a given, if you look under, under, you know, any article, most of the money that was earmarked for transportation has been rolled into fire and, and police. That's where a lot of communities roll their money.
I don't know what other communities, but to answer your.
Well, I'm just trying to tell you that I, I did the search on it and that's what, that's where it goes.
Well, to answer your other question that you had asked, the first one about guaranteeing that it goes to roads, is that it can actually be stipulated in the ordinance because this is passed by ordinance and that's what's on the agenda for consideration later. And the proposed ordinance that the village is considering today identifies and stipulates that it be used for road, road reconstruction and repair.
And can the board change that stipulation?
Absolutely. Any ordinance can be changed by.
So there's no guarantee that it would actually go towards the roads. It could be changed.
As long as that ordinance is in place, it has to.
But you just told me that the ordinance could be changed by another board.
Yes.
So that means it may not necessarily go up to the actual roads.
Down the road, what I'm saying is as long as that ordinance is in place.
The reason we're in, predicament we're in is because of down the road.
I, I realize, I'm just saying that during the time.
I understand what you're saying.
It would have to be.
I totally understand what you're saying, but you, you have no guarantees that the money will go towards the roads all the time.
Forever, no.
No.
All the time while it's in place, yes.
It has to go to transportation.
But it doesn't necessarily mean it'll go towards the roads.
Correct. It always has to go to transportation and, and technically that can change too. It's been in place since nineteen sixty-seven, but the state legislature can change that.
And it doesn't eliminate any special assessments to the, to the resident at the time for whatever works being done in their area.
And so it's another talk. You said no, right now, no, it wouldn't eliminate it, it would just reduce how much that assessment would be.
You know, three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollar bill reduced by two hundred dollars doesn't mean anything to anybody when you get an assessment for over three grand. I'm sorry, it just doesn't.
A concern is if a company does a call, they can set whatever they want to if they enact this.
What?
The county could set their fee to whatever they wanted to.
Yes.
That's right.
And that would go of course to Congress, but they could also make us all in this county pay thirty dollars.
That's right.
Or forty dollars.
That's right.
I mean, we don't know. I mean, this.
And my question is, is new growth in the village for the last five years, how much has it been? How much has new growth been in, in the village for the last five years? How much has the village grown?
I, I mean, I guess I don't know what indicator you're asking for, like value or number of people or.
People. How much, how much has the village grown in the last five years?
In two thousand and ten, the, the census population was twenty-seven eleven and right now the estimate is twenty-seven thirty-four.
So it hasn't grown. So in other words, the tax burden still lowers, falls back onto the resident and not new business, which can actually help offset your taxes.
Wait, how, how is it not to the new business, their property owners?
Their property owners, but along with property owners come great big new schools and everything else, which raises your taxes. And then your water bills haven't gone down in how many years? So tell me where we see new growth when we become one of the highest paid or highest cost villages in the area. I went down the road to Greenville and looked at their growth with, with everything that's going on and a two, two-person home pays half the water bill that I do. Where are you going to build if you're going to build a brand-new home? I'm going to go down there where it costs less, not only that, but their taxes are less. And now we're going to roll in another tax and we are going to project growth?
Project tax.
Well, is there any projection for growth here? Because we need to grow in order to offset some of these bills.
I, I'm kind of.
We have several areas that are already plotted, but the developer hasn't actually done anything to them.
Well, we've got, right here, we've got fifty-six new residents there. We've got new residents coming in at Commonwealth, which is another forty units. We've got a development proposal that's coming out tonight over there. We've got the two events going in over there on the retail part. And then we've got the thirty lot subdivision going up west of here.
Again, you guys.
And how many are?
I just mentioned the other ones at arms.
And how many are set up out of Double M out there for the, the Parker's area out there? Does he have?
Oh, oh, seventy, seventy-three, you mean, on, on Nature's Haven?
Yes.
It's in the seventies, I believe.
And those are just ones that the developers haven't done anything yet.
So they're not doing anything, they're just, they're just laying out land for the possibility of it?
As of right now, yes. I mean, the way things are now, if it were myself setting that, it would be developed because, you know, house, new housing is selling quite crazy, but I would be doing it now, but that, that was me, not the guy that actually owns it.
Understand.
Is it possible that this is a referendum?
That was my next question. It can be put to a referendum.
I think so. I mean, we need to hear from our citizens.
My line is that's what this is for. This is.
Well, that was my next question.
We need to do a referendum.
Will you do a referendum or will you rely on just your board recommendation?
Well, first off, any referendum would be advisory. I don't know what the cost of the referendum would be. I think it'd be significant for something of this nature.
You do it during a normal election. You do it, it's done during, like say a November election, whatever your, your big election is, like for governor or something like that.
Would there be an extra cost for having it in November on the.
Not necessarily, no. Like there's very strict deadlines you have to meet and I mean, it's pretty close to that right now. If we're talking this fall.
Right. And the last thing I would say though is, you know, if you're going to put it on to a board, do you want a tax? It's probably going to go down. You know, that's pretty easy bet. You guys are, have been elected to make the tough decisions and to do what you think's the best interest of them. Sometimes that means taxing.
I would argue that a tax might not go down. I mean, we paid for this, we paid for the school, we paid for the fire department. I think we're, I think we're not afraid to pay taxes, if you call it what it is. A wheel tax, like, I don't understand why we can't, why the assessments are wrong. Like I lived on North Mill here and I was scared every year I was going to get assessed for that shitty road on North Mill Street. I mean, it was a pile of crap and every year I waited and waited for that. Well, now I don't live there anymore, but I knew it was coming. It's coming. People know. You just said we're above average in income, we're above average state, nationally, everything, like, there's not a lack of money out there. I mean, I don't know why a wheel tax, like you say, oh, it's used on everyone, not just the property owners. Well, property owners, it's their road. Like if I want to get out of my house and I want a road there, I should pay for it.
Which we did over in Lakeview Court and the whole Lakeview area. We paid for it because we wanted a road.
If businesses or rental properties, they can, they can pass those fees off to everyone else. That's what they do, like, why, why should, why should people who rent have to pay? I mean, if the property owner wants to pass that cost through to their renters, they can do that. If you want to live in Hortonville, pay to live in Hortonville. We, we bought, we bought the houses in Greenville, their taxes, the same price house was a thousand dollars less than living in Greenville, right? Plus probably a hundred dollars a month in water less. Water bills are ridiculous here.
It's, it's half.
I don't understand that at all, but that's a different problem. But saying a tax, I guess, bow it down, I mean, we pay taxes for plenty of stuff that got passed.
You don't have to look too far into the communities like Black Creek. Same thing happened to them. They don't have a lot of growth out there either.
Plus I don't want to be like New London. You got a wheel tax.
And there's twenty-seven, I believe, you, you mentioned that have wheel taxes?
Yes.
There's six hundred, there's six hundred communities.
Yep.
Very, very small. But you hear more and more, every year, of people that are, of communities that are doing it. And it's getting to be a bigger thing for.
My, my point on that wasn't so much to say that all these communities are doing it, it's just showing, you know, it was really to say that this has really been since two thousand and eleven because of the, the further tightening of the levy caps that have just caused more of an issue than the decreasing of the state aids. It's just kind of been a perfect storm, sort of, since two thousand and eleven and that's where, you know, I, I think every community is, is resistant, doesn't want it. I don't mean the community, just the public, but I mean the boards too. It's just that it's gotten to a dire situation really with transportation across the state. I mean, that's all you hear about is transportation issues. So my point, I'm showing that twenty-seven have now is just to show that more and more are doing it because it's one of the last sources of revenue that, that are, is available to communities because, you know, just the grants out there, that even the pot of money that was used in the past for statewide, for grants, it's fewer money there, more people fighting for it. And so then more and more of the restrictions are put on it, like I mentioned with the low to moderate income. We don't have that. We, we don't meet those qualifications and so it's just, that was my point in saying that the numbers are increasing of who's doing it because there's just, there are few options out there.
I've gotten a lot of mixed opinions. I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten emails. One of the, one of the phone calls I got was a, was a resident that said, where else, okay, so if I handed twenty bucks over to the state, is that going to come back to Hortonville? And I don't really want to pay an extra twenty bucks, but if I'm going to hand that twenty bucks over, then I know it stays in Hortonville and I. Yeah, it's hard.
Thirty-nine, twenty-eight-five percent.
And that's, and, and then another resident called me and said that they had a broken tire rod because of a pothole. They said, well, this is cheaper than a new tire rod. And I, but then I also get other opinions. So I'm getting, I'm getting both, both end of it and, but I guess when I look at it, you know, a nickel a day and it has to stay in this pavement, it has to go towards this pavement that is deteriorating. I mean, I, until I sat here, I didn't understand really how the budget works and it's, you know, and even then, just to look at this and try and understand it entirely, there just isn't any extra money. And then even being on a library board and Pat can probably vote for this, there's just, without the increased funding, like the county increased funding, but the municipality has an increased funding, which eventually, and this could be a while out, but there could possibly be a mandated library tax in the future. So nobody likes being taxed, but we have to. So nobody likes being taxed, but we have to, the library tax thing, I think that, that's handled by the county, correct? Yeah, and that will be a mandated funding. If the municipality doesn't keep up with what they're supposed to, what they're supposed to be putting forth.
That tax, we wouldn't have control because the county would put that on.
That's a mandate. Unless the municipality starts giving more. There wasn't, you can't get oil, lava, water, so there wasn't extra money expected to give to the library, so...
Robert, is it safe to say that your recommendation would be not to put it to referendum? If they were to come, if they were to come to you and ask for your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, that's based on my life experience. I've always had an aversion to referendums in most cases because I think you're just passing the buck. I think it's an easy thing to do, I think it's a kind of pandering. Decisions, you know, you're elected and decisions need to be made. That is my bias. There are times when referendums are helpful. Again, the referendums of this nature are advisory only. So then what happens when the vote is 5149? Is that a mandate enough for them to take action? It doesn't, it doesn't always clear up the situation. It can remain just as muddy and sometimes maybe even makes it a little worse.
I completely agree. I was on the board, you know that. I was on the board for many years. And I know a lot of decisions that are made not because you want to, it's because you're dictated to. The problem I have with another tax is it's not being dictated yet. That's the problem I have, especially when you look at the cost it is to live here. It's a very expensive village to live in.
And that's our whole thing. We, we're trying to attract people.
Right.
And by doing this, are we one more X against us? Is that going to help us?
I suspect we're going to see more municipalities doing this. I think of, I think of some of the, I think of, what was it? And I'm not speaking for the town of Hortonville by any means, but there was a meeting that we had with the town of Hortonville regarding the fire district. And they were saying, we just don't have any growth, we don't have any new money coming in. When we were talking about the fire district. And not that Hortonville, I'm not speaking for them, but that's a perfect situation. Here's a small township that they were saying they don't have money to repair their roads.
They have plenty of money.
Well, they don't have any debt, they don't have any debt. But they...
Yeah, that's, that's a great way to operate.
You know, and they don't have debt. Instead, we're taking out debt to pay for these projects. So we're paying interest, we're taking out debt to pay for projects instead of saving up and paying for them upfront, or at least part of them upfront.
Why couldn't, why couldn't Grand View, for example, be done in segments with the assessments going to the people that live up on the hill and stuff?
Well, up on the hills, actually, over the hills, there's limits. But it's, you mean, in segments, you mean the actual projects constructed in segments? The thing is, is if you, excuse me, if you section off a project, there's, there's the economy of scale. If you do it at once, you know, for example, we're working on trying to bundle the Brookwood project with, I can't remember the street name, it's escaping me. It costs a lot more per foot to do small projects than it is to do it all. So the cost of doing Grand View, redoing Grand View would be considerably higher if we pieced it out rather than do it all at once.
Has there been any studies done to see what the actual cost to the residents in the area for that job? What it would be for an assessment?
Well, right now, just ballpark figure of what the total project is, is we're looking, we're estimating it. It has not gone out for bid, so this is purely an estimate. It's $520,000 for the full project. $175,000 was from the grant, or, you know, will pay towards that. If we follow our village policy or our village ordinance on special assessment, it would be a per foot basis, so it's based on the frontage of it. And I'm, I'm trying to remember, I think it's, I want to say it's 15 or 20%. I don't recall which of the project costs would then be, would go to the property owners and then the tax increment district would be able to fund the remainder. So I don't have a dollar amount for you because I'd have to take the amount minus the grant and all that kind of stuff.
Just in the ballpark, you're talking 15% on a half million dollar project, right?
But I don't, I, I don't, it would be ultimately, it would ultimately be up to the board. But my thought on it, the reason why I can say I can't really come up with a number is because to me, I think it should be 550, the total project cost, minus the grant. And then the property owners pay the remaining. And then also, I'm not sure on the TID contribution, if that's going to come before or after the divvying it up.
I'm just saying, worst case scenario, you could roughly ballpark half a million dollars, 10 to 15% to the landowner.
Which, as we saw with Parker Heights, that was a concern, that it was a hit. That $3,000 is going to be a hit. So we worked hard to try and reduce that.
But this, this, this project is not going to reduce any if.
No.
Very little, if anything.
I'm sorry, it's not going to reduce that?
It's not going to reduce the assessments that still are going to be there for anybody when you do these road, road constructions. You're still going to have assessments.
You'll still have assessments, but that's what I was saying before is that, and again, this is just my opinion, is that it's also up to the board, that I think the revenue from the wheel tax should go towards both reducing the village's portion of it and the assessment to the property owners. So to not remove it, eliminate it, but to reduce the assessments to property owners. I mean, the board could choose to have the entire revenue go strictly towards the village resident, or the property owners' portion of it. That's, I mean, that's your fault. But you can, you as in the board, can further restrict the use of those, any revenue generated with the wheel tax, however you like, as long as it's still transportation. So, I mean, you could certainly direct it however you like within the ordinance. And the ordinance, the draft one that I prepared, restricts it to only reconstruction and repair, you know, rather than all the other things that I had mentioned, you know, general operating costs and so forth. I intentionally restricted it in that draft to be road repair and reconstruction because that's the feeling I got from the board, from past discussions, that you were more interested in.
Seeing we are getting close to already a board, we should be wrapping this up. Is there, did you have something?
Yeah, can I just throw in something quick? I have two things. One is, the, I think there was maybe a misstatement up on Facebook. I just wanted to make sure we set the record straight and don't too closely tie the wheel tax to the Parker Heights stuff. I mean, it was, it was discussed in the same meetings. And then there was inquiry about if those types of funds could be paid towards, towards ours, which the answer to that was no. But that's, that's as close as they come to being tied together. I understand you can, you're going to use this as examples of assessments and things like that, but I would, I would ask that you be clear that it wasn't our ideas to do a wheel tax or, and that's not how it came about. The other one, but that's just a request. And the question I had was, do we have like a long-term plan or even a midterm plan? Like a five-year plan, a 10-year plan for, it seemed like there's a pretty big shortfall in what we can afford to do and what actually has to be done.
What we have is, I mentioned our capital improvement program. And what we do is we, we rank the projects that we need in order of priority. And it's really as...
And that's a short-term, that's your...
It's a, it's a five-year plan and it gets updated every year. It just keeps, you know, keeps rotating, or not rotating, but...
Let me clarify. Do we have a, do we have a longer-term plan to make up for the shortfall that we see? Because we see a shortfall now.
Yeah, right.
And it's just, is there, is the only plan growth or is the plan that, that like, well, the communities that we're just kind of holding out until the state transportation fund gets, starts feeding more money back in? Or is there just no answer?
What we've been doing so far is putting off projects.
Yeah, that's, that's...
And, and trying to find alternative funding sources when we can. So it has been like Grand View, for example, we've been, you know, trying to get grants for, I don't know how long. So it's, it's been finding alternative revenue sources. But the thing is, is the answer to your, your question about long-term, no. Because the thing is, is our, our situation changes annually, both with budget because of levy caps and then also frankly with the legislature, we can't keep up.
So you're trying to balance, you're trying to balance incentive for growth, because the growth is what we pay for more.
Yes.
With also the, trying to fill that shortfall which is going to stunt growth. At the same, so you have two competing. So if you throw, if you throw the extra taxes up, Jeannie's concerned, so if you throw extra taxes up, just...
All right, Jim, at 6:30, we have to wrap this up and start to do it.